Now, could we have Ross at the table for I would forward to give us an update on where we are with the council's direction, we have not a lot of things, issue of the skateboard violation or do it, if you could just introduce your paper and then perhaps answer any questions for Ross if that's all right.
Just giving the council a little idea of where we're planning on taking the community engagement, and as you'll see in the report, we are looking at under community engagement process, some of the bullet points there are optimized to each of the areas that we are looking for, and we're hoping to start that this weekend, there's an event called the Octo Fest on Saturday in the Ockham, where we will be giving the skateboarders an opportunity to give their feedback, and then we will be the rest of the consultation in February and March this year.
When people are around, users will be able to be involved in the process. Just before I go to indicate, Ross, as part of this process, are we going to formally make contact with people who submitted around the previous round of consultation or responded to the bottle?
We will contact them and acknowledge that they've already submitted, and if they wish to resubmit, they have an opportunity to come and view.
Right, thank you. Okay, councillor Wilson.
I'm just slightly concerned about the, in the discussion document on 4.2, that results from this process along with an amended skateboard violation, we reported to the planning in between 30 and 2015, because I presume one of the options being considered will be not to have a skateboard violation, and that's not clear here from this report, because that is presumably under the Local Government Act, we're going to consider all options. Thank you.
Further questions? Councillor Anderson.
I was just going to say happy to move, but can you have a question?
Councillor Calhoun.
Just the people to consult, somebody came along to a public forum, so I don't know whether that was, I think they probably just care community or something, but whoever that was.
Councillor Hawke.
Thank you, I'm just wondering how this work fits in with other work that is involved in the use of footpaths, whether it be that commercial use of footpaths or other, because it seems, because we have a lot of individual work going on, and I'm personally struggling to see how this work fits together, because it has to have some intersect.
The violation itself is looking at through Local Government Act in relation to safety and nuisance of skateboards, whereas the transportation, transportation planning process, and I'm certainly not involved in that, but we will discuss it with them, is not a regulatory function in relation to the violation.
So presently, there's no, no legislation in that respect?
We will discuss with them the outcome, and after their consultation and their input, but this is to do with safety, with the relation to skateboards, and if there are risks to the public, and also if that creates a nuisance, and that's quite right, it may be that we find that we don't, we don't file.
Councillor McTavish.
Just by, thank you, Ross, the query that I had is just in relation to the question that you asked, Mr Chair, in relation to people who have already submitted, so the fact that they will be advised that they have already submitted, that these views will be taken into consideration, that is during the, you will be taking those views into consideration as a pre-notification phase, so that this community engagement process here, yeah, okay.
All right, let's move councillor Anderson, I was second of those. Councillor McTavish, any further discussion?
Well, I appreciate, I'm just, I'm not quite sure whether it was also noted that the process, that it's going to be an options paper, it isn't going to be a violation that comes out this week, the consultation is to give us as council, the options we decide to go forward with, isn't it, rather than a violation, and I appreciate it's in part there, but it's just that bottom line under the discussion that concerns me.
Well, I think the intention, I know the intention is to have this discussion, and then to decide how we proceed in terms of the shape of whatever comes back to this committee, to be able to advertise formally as a replacement or whatever for the current status quo, and then council will determine what happens to that, if hearings happen and who hears at the time, so we may be repeating the process, if what comes out of this, these discussions, if people would tend to indicate to the contrary, we may not.
Yeah, no, it's just to make sure that people understand what we're going to be getting, and.
Just to elaborate on that, through the Chair, we will bring back the community engagement results, and then discuss with PNR the next step.
Where do we go from there? All right. Councillor McTavish.
Just to speak briefly, I think, to the point that councillor Hawkins raised, which I think is a pertinent one, the work that is happening around the city plan, I'm really pleased to see there will be engagement around that with community, and, well, with involving community development and the local policy team, but I think the issue that councillor Hawkins raised is that the city planning team have got that piece of work underway in relation to the city city plan, which would seem to me an integral part of planning the future and how people work around the city, and I think it would be a shame for this piece of work to be done without connecting this process.
Well, I think it's useful, but we've been twice allergic to it, I think it's quite clear that we need to make sure we have been put as part of the submission part of the process with the urban design team.
And just through the Chair, that was presented the last meeting.
All right, I'll put on those that I've pleased, I, that's noted, that takes us to an update on the VECs issue of Freedom Camping. Richard, welcome.
Thank you for your report, councillors are aware of the context, I thought it was helpful for us to have an update both about what's currently happening, changes that have been introduced, about the consultation, to the consultation that was directed by council, which is closed last week, and also the ongoing discussion in respect of a dock style facility, perhaps in the future, so can I ask you to make any comments that you'd like to, and then field whatever questions people have?
Thank you, I think that was a fair, good, sorry, Mr Chair, I guess, the report really outlines the measures that have been taken following the issues last year and last year's camping season, and the changes that have been made in particular to security controls, the dock style campsite certainly is a feasibility study that we're kicking off at the moment to be completed in time for the review of the responsible camping policy that's required at the end of the season, so we can do that timeframe, and as you pointed out, the consultation for the proposed additional trial site at Bayfield Park closed Monday, and there will be a separate report coming to council for a decision on whether that's added as an additional site for the remainder of the season. It'd be worth it, as stated in the report, the changes that have been made for the season, including increased security and improved signage, what we have seen in the, particularly I guess in the last three to four weeks, is that it is still not achieving total compliance in terms of the numbers, the demand is exceeding what has been provided for as far as those not, the five sites provided, particularly again at Macandrie Bay, and we will have to be aware of that and consider those things when we're undertaking this review at the end of the season.
Well, you were saying that you were just on that matter this morning, do you want to make any comment about that?
So that level is around the enforcement action we take and the recommendation that we start cleaning vehicles, the enforcement action we can take set out in the Freedom Camping Bible, so we are restricted to infringement notices, which is something that our security guards are receiving training in, should they need to issue infringements, and while vehicle cleaning may be a way to ensure revenue, it's unfortunately, it's not an option for us.
And can you tell us any more about the response of those who receive infringement notices to getting such, are they cooperative, or do they just survive off into the sunset?
To date, we haven't issued any, we've achieved voluntary compliance for those campers who are asked to vacate or move on.
Thank you, councillor.
Thank you, thanks, Richard, you mentioned, and I was going to bring it up anyway in your conclusion, but you mentioned it before, the idea of improved signage, assuming by that you just mean more signs, because personally, I've heard complaints from residents on Macandrie Bay who, to use their own words, are embarrassed by the proliferation of signage, both from an amenity and hospitality perspective, and I just wonder again, aside from the sheer volume, have any other approaches are being considered?
So there was a change to the, it wasn't just a case of increasing the volume of signs, it was a change to the text to try and better reflect the responsible camping policy rules, so we're trying to steer away, particularly on the harbour side of the road, from the proliferation of signs, I think that would be, point taken.
Thank you, any other questions, councillors? Councillor Pete.
Thank you, Richard, just a question about the study that will ensure over the summer to see if we can identify dock style campsite, can you just tell us a bit more about the process, I think you mentioned there, by the end of March or March, I'm not sure whether it's useful or not.
Yes, it's very much a collaborative project with Dock, who are keen to explore the opportunity of a campsite on their conservation land, and as part of that, we'll look at other opportunities, should there not be a feasible site on their land, so the study will look at all the available, all the land that could be available, both private and public land, either council land or dock land, and the facilities that may be required to get it up to a standard that it would be used, and obviously, we're looking at the demand, we, we know, and it does lead, the demand is there from the Freedom Campers, because there are more than the amount we can provide for, but there is also some feedback through the People's Panel that will use, and that will be, will be considered in that feasibility report, just to ensure that there is actually demand for the facility. Yeah, sorry, that date is 31st of March, is to ensure we have that available to us when we're reviewing this at the end of the season.
Are you able to make any comment about the attitude or competitiveness of Dock in respect of their development on that?
Yeah, very cooperative, they've been very willing, come to the table, and in effect, driving some of the discussions to push this forward, so they are very keen to see this progress.
Thank you, councillor Wylie.
Thank you, Richard, have you also been talking to the campground at Portobello?
On which?
On most ACC style campground taking place on the peninsula.
No, we haven't, there will be, part of the brief to whoever takes the feasibility study will be to consider all of the current facilities available, and making sure we're not duplicating something that is already there, so they will need to review the Portobello and also the Stilda, the Dean Holloway Park too, so we've got a very good picture of what's available really, and not just duplicating.
Okay, Bayfield Park consultation?
Yes.
How did that go, how many responses?
So we had, we had two by the closing date, I followed up, I had sent a specific notice to the school to advise them, they hadn't responded by the closing date, so I followed it up and spoke to the principal, and I subsequently received something from the school, we will accept that and consider it in our report to council, given their relationship to the post site.
Anything from the Gathfrye Pavilion?
Sorry, and the Gathfrye Pavilion, both came through, what, Wednesday, sorry, Friday last week.
What notification went out to the public on that?
So there was public notice in the Taga data times for this one.
Just once?
Yes.
Okay, and, sorry, and when we look at the camping in proposal for Bayfield Park, are we looking at self-contained or non-self-contained?
We're looking at an amendment to the policy around non-self-contained, that's the area that allows us to put in the additional site, is that portion or so, six of the responsible camping policy and camping in non-self-contained, so that's what we're looking at.
Okay, I appreciate, I received the reports on, that have come out weekly or bi-weekly, with the security controls, I think they're essential, seeing what's taking place, when someone's asked to move on, where are they directed to?
They're directed to the campgrounds, and given a brochure showing where they are.
Okay.
Or, or, sorry, or the other two areas set aside, but they're obviously a fair distance from Macandrie Bay, so it's more likely to be that they'll be pointed to the two campgrounds that are reasonably close.
Okay, and are we seeing issues mostly with self-contained or non-self-contained? Or mixture?
Yeah, mixture, hard to, I would say it's a mixture, it's both.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just, before I go to the other questions, in respect of the consultation around Bayfield, proposal around Bayfield Park, I understand that the suggestion is the use of one or one or two of the toilets currently existing in the changing block, is that right?
Correct.
Councillor Kelver.
I presume that we're getting some sort of report back from the security people, it would be useful, since they're going there anyway, you know, $35 a time, twice a day or whatever, that they would be able to give us some reasonably useful and regular response, are we, are we getting that?
Yes.
So if I asked you in March, how often did they go and find extra people, how many extra people, what happened when they, you know, what proportion of the people who they said should move on, how often was the rubbish all over the ground, or?
We will be able to give, we'll be able to give a very detailed report on numbers, and how many were asked to vacate the area and what the responses were from those, at this stage, they're not reporting on rubbish or general amenity, they're reporting on the numbers of campers and where they are requesting campers move on, what the responses that they're receiving to those requests are.
Would it be, could we actually ask them about rubbish, or even the possibility of them collecting any rubbish, or, I don't know how often the rubbish is a problem, but I would think if it was in my backyard, that would be the thing I would particularly be concerned about, and so if we could either have a report so as we knew whether they needed to, rubbish bins were too small or needed to be emptied or off it, or even whether they could, from time to time, do that, or?
So we work with our contractors to, on the rubbish collection, so that they've been, the collections have been increased to cater for the increase in use of the area, they would report to us if the bins were regularly overflowing and we'd put more in, we're not getting those reports, and we haven't today received complaints about rubbish in the area, the complaints that we've received relate solely to the volume of campers, the actual behaviour in rubbish this season, haven't been issues raised.
Councillor McTavish.
Thank you, so we're using some, my question is just related to the feedback that you guys have given us in the research that you're presenting at the end of this summer period, and I'm just wondering whether as part of that research, there is any intention to engage in making the action campus and ask them where they might have gone if that Freedom or Responsible Camping period wasn't available, because I think that there's some of your intentions or the answers coming from the idea that these, they need to track them down from businesses or, but it's actually the two, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm working with Sophie at Enterprise at the moment on a survey, to try and get, we're looking to try and get about 100 responses from each of the three sites set out in the policy to inform that research as well, so that'll be the new.
That'll be useful, councillor Hawkins.
Thank you, Richard, and just to progress to the dock proposal, am I right in assuming that at the bottom of 5.6 in the report, that anything set up in the peninsula would be a new recreation opportunity in their parks?
Sorry.
So, the dock style campground that we're talking about, this would be a new recreation opportunity, as in Dock currently prioritises proposals for new recreation?
Yes, sorry, yes it is, so that's something that they don't currently have in, in the name as a campsite on any of their conservation lands, so they will see that as a, as a new opportunity, and part of their, I guess, their key objective are providing spaces for the community to engage with their land, and this would be seen as an opportunity for that.
I just wondered if you had any steer from them at a moment too, or do you have to tell as to, because they set out their criteria here, as to how many of these they feel such a proposal would meet?
There, from, from various, and it is initial discussions, we haven't looked at any detail, that there are two to three dock sites that they could consider, and then we would need to, the feasibility on those sites to determine whether that's taken further, or obviously, the alternative is to start looking at other land that isn't conservation land, that answers that.
Right, so the feasibility is trying to, is trying to match up that facility to their priorities for new recreation, that's right.
Right. Councillor Thompson.
My question.
Thank you, councillor Loom.
Thanks, Mr Chair, and my question's just around the information that's on the website via apps, and is there adequate information to tell the visitor about the actual site, the expectations, capacity and that sort of thing, rather than just identifying where the site is, I'm just trying to make sure that the brochure is mirrored in that, in the website information as well, it was just a question that was raised with me by a resident closer to one of these particular sites, and he wasn't convinced that the information mirrored the brochure, so doesn't.
I would have to go and check that, as far as I'm aware, the brochure's certainly on the website and available on the website, I couldn't comment on the apps that it uses, so I can certainly find that out.
Because I just, I just think that's, that's quite important, because a lot of people would only use an app.
Okay, that's right, councillor Pete.
Thank you, Richard, the compliance controls, do they give you an idea of the breakdown of the type of vehicle that is using this, I ask this because my anecdotal and time kind of view of it is that probably something like 20 to 30% of the vehicles are not even camper vans, they are wagons or cars, and people expect them to sleep in those and even cook and, you know, cater for those types, so I just wanted, you know, it's probably a bit early for you to answer that, but.
We do get a breakdown of the types of vehicles in terms of contained and non-self-contained, I don't think currently they're breaking down the non-self-contained, it is, the definition includes any vehicle other than a self-contained vehicles, catchment and non-self-contained, so we haven't asked them for that breakdown because as far as the rules don't descend.
Two more, councillor Lord.
Yeah, Richard, I just wondered, so do we have any idea, for example, the Macca site, there was far too many people last year, do we have any idea if people get out there and the site is full, and then they carry on and illegally camp somewhere else on the peninsula, or do we know how many go out and then find it's full and go back somewhere else, have you got any doubt around that, or?
No, we don't, no, no, there's no, there's no roaming patrols, if you like, past the Macandrie Bay site, currently, so and we don't know those that may go out there and come back in towards the city, it's purely what's, what's at the location.
And councillor Wylie, you got a lot?
Yeah, just to follow up on councillor Loom's question, the maps are pretty accurate in that sense of describing the information, and also the camping.co.nz has a very good app on it, and there's a several others that do cover it all off, so people can easily access that information on their mobile phones.
Thank you, that. All right, it's moved, motion by councillor Hawkins, I'll second, any further discussion? Councillor Pete.
Thank you, I think some of you around the table would know my view on this, but just let me elaborate a little bit about it, I mean, a Taga Peninsula is probably the reason why most of the camper vans are coming because of the nature, and so we're expecting this site to cater for quite a bit of, a big volume of traffic, so the first thing I'd say is, you know, thanks to Richard and the team for upping the compliance aspect, I think it's an improvement, and probably, what to say is that most of the complaints have come about from the numbers of vehicles on there, and a little bit of crowding that's gone on there so far this year, we haven't hit the peak of the, of the season yet, but we're, I think, for me, the site doesn't fully satisfy what it's, we are tending it to do, it's an urban site, and it's a lot of tough seal and paid footpaths, and we haven't added any extra infrastructure to, to support this kind of volume, I'm talking about toilets and, and cooking facilities, and even food preparation areas, and they are not part of, not part of the violation, we're specifically saying that, and probably do in the brochures and websites, but I think if, if, if there can be, and I come down to the other, of the alternative opportunities of a, of a dock style campsite, the Taga Peninsula is a glaring gap in the country's network of those such facilities, when you look at West Coast Camps and other places, you see, you see numbers of them, thinking and feeling, and, you know, every couple of minutes, you see one up the Indian Valley, but on the peninsula, a major wildlife, you know, attraction for, for visitors, we don't see anything of the sort, so I'm wishing, well, it's feasibility study, I hope it does find a solution for that.
Thank you, there, councillor Wylie.
Like councillor Pete, I think most people know my views now on Freedom Camping, I will be supporting this as it is for noting, but I am really frustrated that what we are doing with Freedom Camping in the city, just in my break after this morning session, and I went up to the Overwood Kensington, and had looked there, I've just received a photo earlier this week, of six camper vans lined up, and just seeing how they're all there, and two of them, by looking at the photo, were non-self-contained, I went and talked to the manager of the Kensington Tavern, to see if they accessed the toilets there or anything like that, or if they contribute to the tavern there, the pub there, and they said no, they sort of stick to themselves, so I'd hate to think where those possibly two camper vans would go to the toilet. The part that I look at is that we can see campers parked, and not, this is particularly non-self-contained campers, parked in areas like the Mollers by Plato, in front of the Jade Building, and various places around town, while looking at the Overwood camping area, a resident there who was running his dog, had a quick chat to me, and he said, he said, oh no, he says, you want to see what Morningside Park looks like, you want to see the camper van come up there, and this is the problem, we're seeing campers not just going to the campgrounds, also these designated areas, they're also choosing to park wherever they feel like it, so I think with maps like this and the camping apps, we need to do a better job, and we can do a better job, and I don't think it's all about putting a dock style campground out on that peninsula, you know, it was really great to hear Joe Polling when we were out looking to Roaring Rocks, to hear that, you know, they would like to see more Freedom Campers out there, they've got a great facility out there, they'd like to see more people encouraged to go out that way and stay overnight there, the Motor Caravan Association are doing a good job of their efforts, they're building their new area, they've got further development on the Tyre, I think that's going to help as well, but the biggest disappointment and frustration I have is that I don't want to see our city parks, like Bayfield, become campgrounds, where those parks are for the residents, and for people to play sport, to have their kids play in the playground, we can put the signage up, we can say camping here from an hour before dusk and an hour after dawn, but until we tell them it's 8am, 8pm to 8am, or something specific like that, we will still see campers turning up at five or three o'clock in the afternoon, and staying until 10 o'clock the next morning, and anybody who's going to watch cricket at Bayfield Park, or soccer or any other sport there, will know trying to get a park at a Saturday morning at 9am at Bayfield Park is next to impossible, so clear signage is a big plus, but I'm really frustrated that we continue to use our car parks as places for campers to come and stay where we can do a better job.
Councillor McTavish.
Well, I just, I just wasn't expecting this, but I just, I, I think it is, it is important to make the point that if there is a caravan that happens to be parked up in a certain spot between the hours, or within the hours of daylight, and there is no one sleeping in it, you know, there's simply someone parking, and it is very difficult for us to make a distinction between someone who happens to be parked and someone who is deciding that they might like to spend the night there, and they, at the time, between, say, five and and they, at the time, between, say, five and eight pm or between eight and 10 pm, just happen to be parked.
Thank you. There being no further speakers, I'll put my note in the report, those in favor, please say aye. Against no. That's three, and that takes us to item six. I believe that the people wish to report to the future consideration. There being, I'll declare the end of the conference. Thank you for your attention.